The Board of Education will come to order at this time. Is there a motion to enter into the executive session?
I move that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss personnel, legal negotiations, and property acquisition issues Article 24, Section 4-210A, 1, 5, 8, and 11.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Anyone opposed? Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Board will now enter the executive session. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on.
Okay.
Ready, cut, hold on.
Okay. Welcome to everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Another great day. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. Couple introductions here this morning. We have Anna Loughlin with us, President, Education Association of St. Mary's County. Anna, good morning, how are you? We also have Faith Abernathy with us this morning, President, Collective Education Association of St. Mary's County. Faith, how are you? Nice to see you. And Harold Siskin, Co-President of St. Mary's County Public Schools Retiree Association. Harold, nice to see you this morning. And another round of applause, the color guard.[205.56][205.56](applause)
If we could introduce them right now?
Yes.
If you'd like to go, if you just pass the microphone and state your name and your grade.
My name is Josh Buscher, I'm in 10th grade.
Name's Alan Bailey, 12th grade.
Alan Lee, 10th grade.
Zachary Javier, 11th grade.
Back to your instructor, please. Introduce yourself.
And Captain JP Kelly.
JP, Mr. Captain P. Wood, please. Tell us just a little bit about the R O T C at Great Mills, if you would.
We're pleased that this is our 11th year at Great Mills High School, and we've steadily maintained an enrollment of about 150 students in the program. N J R T C is a citizenship and leadership development program, so it's intended to make better citizens, better leaders, for our nation's future. We're pleased that the core part of the program is that they learn to lead by doing, and as you can see today, we're very, very proud of these young students.
Absolutely. Give them a round of applause.[285.13][285.13](applause) And thank you, and that will be in the Twitter sphere in two seconds. Thank you very much. Board members, we said we were going to do this on a regular basis this year.
Yes.
Bring our R O T Cs in to lead the pledge, and we're very proud, particularly the symbolism during this week of Veterans Day and having our speeches here, this is even more significant. So, to our young gentlemen, we really appreciate your work, and Captain, thank you for being here as well, and we're so proud of you, and now we need to get you back to class so studying and graduating.[319.52][319.52](laughter) All right, thank you. Having a wonderful holiday, coming up here. Bye.
Thanks. Board members, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I think the ayes have it. Let's move right into Board reports, because we've had a busy, busy two weeks. Peter, we'll start with you this morning.
All right, thank you. First, I wanted to talk about the G E D graduation ceremony, that was held at the Forest Center, I believe, last week. It was a wonderful ceremony, and it was great to see such a large number of graduates that were graduating from the program. Next, I want to talk about something that I actually planned over the summer and before I had started my position as student member of the Board of Education. As part of my campaign that I wanted throughout this year, I really wanted to connect the students from around the county, and I didn't really know how. So, over a couple of months, I decided to have a plan to really get a great number of student leaders in the county and collaborate to identify and maybe solve some of the problems that we all face in the county. And through that, I came up with the idea of the Council of Extraordinary Student Leaders. Now, we held our first meeting on October 1st, the previous month, and the council is composed of the National Honor Society, Student Government Association, and Class of 2014 Presidents, as well as the Student Member on the Board of Education who facilitates the meeting. The purpose of the council, as I kind of stated before, is to come together as student leaders, each representing their own schools and clubs, in a roundtable discussion to identify common threads that exist between the schools, whether that be student-related issues or problems that occur. We got together in the Board of Education room here, in fact, and had more, kind of like a roundtable discussion, coming together as schools to kind of identify things that we noticed in our schools that might be improved, or things that we saw that could be identified. So, if you look here, this was the Leonard Towns Board, and this was their Student Government, National Society, and Class 2014 Presidents. They came together and created this board of things that they noticed in their schools. And this was Great Mills, as well as Chopticons. Now, from these, we realized, and we kind of stepped back and looked at all of them together, and realized the things that we all said, and the things that we all noticed that were happening around the county. And together with that, we came up with this board. Now, I really want to focus on this, which is what I call the common thread, given to me by one of the advisors of mine, that these are the things that we all noticed in our schools that really don't make us that different, that we really wanted to address. One of those being my talk of bullying and help response, which was another main issue that I wanted to identify and kind of get the word out about this year. This issue among a couple were things that myself and other student leaders from around the county were looking at. Now, the next step from this, I would like to say, research from the committee, is to really spread the word about the things that we identified. And through that, the next couple of months will be myself and the other students from the council coming together in our communities and spreading out the words and spreading out the issues such as bullying and other topics to our fellow students. Thank you.
Peter, very, very nice report, very interesting. Thank you very much for getting all that involvement. Mrs. Croft.
Good morning. Well, bullying certainly is a big issue, as you've seen on television recently and the football. Last February, for some unknown reason, I lost my balance, and I've been to just about every single doctor you can think of, and they don't know why, but they do know you can reconnect, like wires, the wires that shorted out. And I've been in physical therapy, I've been released, and now I'm taking Tai Chi, and I'm getting my balance back, and it's wonderful. You don't know what your balance is until you lose it. But anyway, I bought a Labrador about nine years ago, she was eight weeks old, and I took her for a walk every single day. Well, now she weighs about 95 pounds, she's very smart, and can sense when I don't have that same pull on her, even though she's been to obedience school. So, I hired a little boy across the street to walk her, because she's got, if you say walk, she runs to the window, and he has to call me before he comes. So, the phone rings, she runs to the window, smart dog, smarter than I am, I think, looks out the window and waits for him to come to walk her. I said, "What are you doing with this money? I pay him $6 for about a half hour." He said, "Well, I used to just blow my money, but I am saving my money for a laptop computer." Anyway, the other day, he called, and he kind of has a low voice, and he whispered, and he didn't show up, and my dog, her name is Chocolate Candy of Esperanda, so Cece, short, she looks out the window, she's going crazy, she thought she had a walk and she didn't have one. Anyway, he came, the last time he came, he says, "You want to know where I was and when I missed?" He said, "I was getting my laptop." And he said, "But I'm still going to walk the dog." And this is quite a lesson, because it's for children. You set a goal, you work toward it, and you attain it. And he said, "And you know what? I'm still going to walk that dog. Well, I guess I'll let him walk it when I can walk it again." But anyway, I just think that's so neat, a story about children and setting goals, and adults, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Croft. Are you going to teach the youngster how to use the computer?
He could probably teach me.[742.62][742.62](laughter) But he got a, I asked him what he got, I said, "Did you?" He said he got a Dell. I said, "Well, I used to have a Dell. Frankly, I like my Dell a whole lot better than my Lenovo." Anyway, I said, "Did you get an Inspiron?" He says, "Yes," so he does know a lot about computers.
Oh, good. Excellent. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Saturday, I had the opportunity to strap on the tool belt.[766.43][766.43](laughter) We had to knock some dust off that thing, I'll tell you, but Kim and I went over, there was a Christmas in April project around the house, around the corner from us, and we built a ramp on this lady's, this student's house. And it was just, it was a nice day, it was good to get the shovel back on and realize how old I am, because I tell you, the next day I could barely move. But we did, built about 20 feet of ramp with Christmas in April's help and laid concrete, and it was, it was an enjoyable day. We had great weather for it, and it was a nice turnout. So, thank you.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Washington.
Not a sport.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here and to live in our great nation. I attended the Veterans Day Parade, and I was the co- emcee with Barbara Ives, who is the academic dean at St. Mary's Reichen High School, and with the mayor of Leonard Town. It is my honor and pleasure to do that. We live in a patriarchy county where we value our veterans and selfless leadership. There were over 103 groups participating in the parade, and St. Mary's County has the largest Veterans Day Parade in the state of Maryland.
Somebody said the concert.
Yes. The parade was dedicated to Captain Walter Francis Duke, and our newest elementary school will be named after him. He was a local hero of fight or pilot, and we broke ground in that school in October. The school will hold approximately 670 students, and it will also focus on all branches of the military. But Captain Walter Francis Duke is the epitome of what a leader is. He represent courage, he represented courage, integrity, respect, and a willingness to pay the ultimate sacrifice for his country. The second part of the program was the wreath laying ceremony and speeches by our dignitaries. U.S. Congressperson Steny Horia, local delegation, Delegate O'Donnell, Delegate John Bohannon, Delegate Johnny Wood, in addition to the base commander, Captain Shevchuk. And a special speech was given by Captain Duke's nephew, and he talked about his memories with his uncle when he was young. Even at that age, he said, "Captain Duke showed great leadership." Also, his niece read a poem which brought tears to many of the eyes of the people who were there. It was a wonderful day, and I am glad to be a part of this Board of Education, working with the superintendent in this county, where we close schools for Veterans Day. Not all municipalities close their schools for Veterans Day, but we do, because we want to respect those who have given so much for their country. Not only for them, but their families who make sacrifices too. So, I thank this Board of Education, the superintendent, for making sure that we close school, because many of the participants in the parade are our students. All three marching bands played, our students who are sitting on the front row. It is a tradition with Leonard Town Elementary School, where they give the speeches there at the Veterans Day Parade, and people look forward to that, and they're going to read those speeches to us a little later on during the meeting. So, it was a wonderful sunny day, blue sky, and it was a little cold, but not too cold. Everybody prepared and wore layers, but it was a fun day. So, God bless America. Thank you, Dr. Rasba.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. And Mrs. Washington left out one little thing. It's Mrs. Washington's birthday on Veterans Day, so we all sang happy birthday.[1022.73][1022.73](applause)
Thank you very much, and that makes my birthday extra special, that I'm there with the veterans and celebrating the veterans and America, and to live in a free country. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Allen.
Recently, the Board of Education met with the Board of County Commissioners up at Wacomico Shores Golf Course. We try to do this twice a year with the Board of County Commissioners, so that we, it's another example of the partnership we work towards, and it's information that's provided jointly to us, which is very helpful to all of us. There were three presentations that were done. The superintendent began by presenting his priorities, as well as sort of a mini state of the school system, and he was very proud at that point to be able to share that although the number is still unofficial, that our graduation for the first time ever in St. Mary's County has topped 90 percent. So, congratulations, because that was absolutely a joint effort by administrators, by teachers especially, and by students to make that happen. We also learned about the technology capacity within the county and how the county and the school system have collaborated to bring broadband to all of our schools. And also, then we ended with a presentation on early childhood education, more so from the county perspective and the Early Childhood Board, and what they bring to this effort. But it really pointed out once again the importance of early childhood education and the impact that it has had ultimately on our graduation rate. So, it was a meeting that was very well done, and I appreciate the opportunity to work collaboratively with the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. I also attended the Veterans Day Celebration in Leonard Town, and what a celebration it was. A beautiful event. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
There were over 1,200 participants in this parade, and it was nice to see the people come out, and all the children there along the road, you know, watching the parade. And I even had the opportunity to ride in a 1903 Osmobile, which I was concerned if it was going to get up the hill.[1191.32][1191.32](laughter)
They like us to trade places. Oh, well.[1197.51][1197.51](laughter)
What a great experience. It, I'm sure all of you were there, but, you know, it really touches the heart, you know, and it, so many things make your eyes water sometimes to see all this taking place, and our veterans there, and the tribute to our veterans. We all are very, very close to veterans, some of us have veterans that live, are in part of our family, and that even gets closer and closer. But it's great to see our community to come out and be part of this, and this recognition, and that tells so much about our community. And that's very important, and that's why we are all here, and that's why we all contribute. And there's so many people in our community that contribute to make our community a better place, better for our children in our schools. And of course, our 90 percent graduation rate really tells a story. Dr. Mariano is going to elaborate more on this, and we all feel great about it. And I know every one of you in this room today feel great about it. It's very close to us. Thank you very much for being here this morning, being with us. We're going to hear the speeches this morning of these five children here who spent some time, and the staff's with us this morning. And, boys and girls, I want to thank you as a board member and on behalf of the Board of Education, for taking the time to do this, to be there in front of the population on Monday, people in our community, to read those great speeches, and every single one of them was great. They really were. So, I want to thank you very much, thank your teachers that are here, and I think there's some parents here too. Thank you very, very much. Dr. Mariano, that brings us to you.
Okay, very good. Well, welcome to our boys and girls from Leonard Town Elementary School today. I'm very excited. I'm going to try to move through my report very quickly, so we can get to the main event, which is all of you today. My voice is a little shaky today, because I got so exuberant riding on the float with you on Monday, and I got a little bit too much into that USA cheer, I think. I think we had every participant on the street doing that cheer, as we put our flags up, and "USA, USA," and now I'm suffering through the whole week with that today. But it was worth it, it was worth it, so bear with me. The Veterans Day Parade was just phenomenal. Mrs. Washington, I want to commend you, you represent us so well. My daughter, who is just my oldest, as many of you know, who's graduated from law school and is working now on base as an attorney, obviously was off that day, and she's now, thank you, Ms. Eichel, for allowing her to join in the tradition. She says, "Dad," she was frantic last week, she said, "When's the Veterans Day Parade? Can I ride on the float again?" And I said, "Well, I'll communicate with the principal," and she enjoyed it. But from someone who is assimilating into the community, is loving living here, was very pleased and just honored to know you, quite frankly. She said that she was just commenting on all your words that were coming across, the pride, and I was so proud of you as a board member, knowing you were one of our board members, one of my board members, and I say that in my pronoun, as I heard you so enthusiastic and so proud across the microphone, coming all through the town of Leonard Town, and it was packed. Did a great job. Give Mrs. Washington a round of applause again.[1421.41][1421.41](applause) And not to mention, she celebrated her 19th birthday this week, so we're very proud of her in that sense, lots of accomplishment in her short life of 19 years. And all the board members who participated, it was well represented. Mrs. Allen and I have a tradition of riding on the float with Leonard Town Elementary School, and Ms. Eichel, again, thank you for always offering that, that's our way of saying we want to be invited again next year too, as we do that.
Thank you very much.
But it was a phenomenal day, and we were very pleased. So, I'm going to move through my report quickly, as quickly as I can, sir, so we can get to all the other items.
Dr. Mariano, please, please.
I know.
Take all the time you want.
We set these agendas with the understanding, if I would be quiet, we would move through them with many times, much more time in the bank. Multicultural Awareness Month, the National Native American Heritage Month is obviously in November, and Dr. Shawna Lacy, who has been sending a variety of different pieces of information about that. We've been very cognizant of celebrating all of our heritages throughout the school year, she's brought great focus to that particular piece. Yesterday, board members, I'd just love you to death, and you know that, but all of, we have a nice way, we constantly communicate, constantly communicating, whether it's through emails or texts or phone calls, always keeping each other informed, and Mrs. Allen, who really likes to really pick at me every now and then, and she did yesterday, she was the first one to announce to me that there were, I was in a meeting, and she says, "Snow flurries now." And I went, "Where?" And she said, "Seen on base." And then I started getting emails from yesterday. So, boys and girls, do you like snow?
Me too.
Do you like snow days?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do you think I like snow days? No, no.[1526.23][1526.23](laughter) So, I'm the proverbial lightning rod, if you understand what that means, this Board of Education has vested an incredible amount of authority and power in the position of superintendent for the job that I have, and one of those jobs is to, on days working with my staff, is to determine if we need to close for weather-related events, and that could be hurricanes, tornadoes, rain, a variety of different things that occur, but mainly it's weather events that occur in the winter. And so, if you're following through, what grade are you all in? You're in fifth grade? The last several years, we haven't had many snow days, so people are going with the law of averages and saying, "Looks like this could be the year." So, as already my friends who are superintendents in the western Maryland area, they've already had two inches of snow, they had an inch yesterday, Mrs. Allen's reminder that snow could be upon us, Mr. Clements and I, who are real good friends, who's the deputy superintendent, he has to make that phone call to me about 3:30 in the morning, and we begin having that conversation. So, those are not exciting days for me, but we will always err on the side of safety. So, there will be some communications, and I'm doing this with all seriousness, there will be some communications put out to the community in the next couple of weeks, letters to the editor, communications, reminding folk about the upcoming winter weather, looking like it's going to be colder, we're in a cold snap right now, and we're always ready and prepared to do that. We, and our board members, I just want to reemphasize, those decisions are always made with the best interest of the safety of our staff, our students, and all of our community members as we get, once we start our operations, our operation starts early in the morning. Jeff Thompson, 260 buses, how many do we have?
We have 200 on the road.
200 on the road, and our fleet, over 250, but over 200 buses on the road. We turn those, literally turn that key to start the school day, things start moving. And when you've got close to 18,000 students and, you know, 2, 3,000 staff members and parents moving, it's quite a, quite a production when things are in place and moving. We do it without a hitch, but the weather can surely put us all at risk, so I wanted to remind you on that one. So, thank you, Mrs. Allen, for letting us know there's snow. I really appreciate that.
I knew you would.
Blood pressure went up a little bit at just that moment. Mrs. Allen and others have already mentioned a joint meeting. We had an excellent meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, by far one of the best, working very closely with the new county administrator, Dr. Rebecca Bridget, who I really enjoy working with, has come in from Charles County. A little different flavor to the tone of the meeting, as well as the location. We were up at Wacomico Shores, a lovely facility, and did very, three very connected pieces. Appreciate the acknowledgement that we did the, I was able to talk for about 20 minutes on our vision, making certain that people know why we do what we do. There is a real method to our actions that we put in place every day, followed by the information about the technology, it was all interrelated to the vision plan. Jim Kornes was there with us as well, and if Jim's still in here or not. We're all very connected, obviously, in terms of the wireless communications, all of our schools highly where we need to be right now to prepare for this, you know, future that we don't really know what it's going to hold in store for our young people, because we're preparing them for problems that haven't even been defined yet. And then the aspect of our early childhood interventions as well, and front-loading all those pieces of information. It was an excellent meeting, I was very pleased with it. We talked about our Veterans Day Parade and how proud we were there, our Great Mills Color Guard, I was just delighted to have them present today, and we're going to do that from representatives from our school, always putting young people in front of you, board members. We do that with intentionality. I appreciate the fact that you do your board reports at the front of the meeting, and we've done that with intentionality through, you know, the work that you devised and how you wanted those to be conducted. Many school districts have a separate night of recognition, it's just devoted to that, and it, I've been involved in that, and it feels rather rushed, it doesn't feel that level of specialness, and at the board meetings, the board meetings have a tendency to take on a very formal institutional feel. And this board has embraced the fact that we want young people in front of us all the time, the acknowledgement of our student board member in terms of the report, our Veterans Day, because it sets the tone for why we do what we do. You know, having our young people in front of us all the time, our parents in our community, is that constant visual and reminder of why we do what we do and the implementation of our programs, and all of your agendas are devoted to that, in terms of putting information items on that are connected back to the vision, action items that we have to advance, and we've got a lot of things in motion right now with our C I P, a variety with our CIP, a variety of projects going on, instructional data coming out, preparing for the State of the School System Address, preparing for a community meeting coming up in, uh, December, which we're, haven't announced the date on that yet. We're still putting that together. Uh, a lot of recognition tonight. Many of you will join me at the, uh, the Rotary Club will be acknowledging all the educators of the year at the Elks Lodge, uh, in, in Lexington Park in California, Maryland. And that event will occur this evening. Uh, Sean Snyder's with us today, uh, in the audience. He'll be, uh, recognition of the American Education Week. Uh, Sean, we'll talk more about you momentarily, uh, you know, as we do your acknowledgement, here with Anna Loughlin, uh, president of our Teachers Association, American Education Week. All these things in motion, uh, that lead to, and I'm leading to something today, to my crescendo, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm very excited right now. And I'm, I'm having a hard time containing myself. Uh, this is a very emotional experience, boys and girls. You need to understand, these young, these people up here work on your behalf all day long, your principal, your teachers, the community. You represent why we do what we do, 18,000 kids that we have in the school system. And what drives me, you know, as a, as a, as a, as the longest-serving superintendent in Maryland, uh, and I'm very proud of that, to say that, I'm not boastful when I say that. Uh, I'm always asked these questions now that I think are devoted to wise old sage, is, you know, what keeps you up late at night, I'm always asked. Um, what drives you, uh, you know, in that sense? How do you get these results, you know? And it's, it's interesting. What drives all of us to make a difference in the lives of young people? Uh, what keeps me up late at night is I worry constantly. I'm not a worrier. I'm not an anxious person by nature. But I'm constantly thinking about the safety of our young people, the safety of our staff, the educational experience that our young people are entitled to, and making it better, even better than what it was yesterday, uh, than what it is today. And, and we're, we're in pretty good shape right now. Uh, but you would think in many ways, the way we talk and we strategize, that we were a low-performing district when we're a very high-performing district. Because with urgency, you know, one child who doesn't make it across that, that wall for graduation caused me concern. So these fifth graders here, you're going to graduate, you're going to graduate on time, and you're going to go to college. I know that. I can tell in your eyes. I know that you've got that ambition in the support of our community. You represent those 18,000 young people today. And our graduation rate, uh, what we put in, again, you know, our five-year graduation rate, 89.3, the highest ever. Uh, our four-year graduation rate for the class of 2013 is that highest piece of hanging fruit that you can pluck from that tree, that proverbial tree of a set of, of data. Uh, it's one we've been jumping on trampolines and jumping on everything to get to. And it's elusive. It grows as we get closer, grows a little higher. And, but for the first time, we've submitted data to the state that indicates that 90, 90.3% of the graduating class for St. Mary's County Public Schools, what we submitted, it has been official, it hasn't been stamped with approval. We got a pretty good sense that it's going to stick. I say that because I'm not going to step out here too far. Um, we have never been in this air. We've never been in this air. And it's, 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 I, I love it. All of a sudden, I'm seeing clear. Um, I'm having these wonderful, colorful dreams at night. It's just, everything's beautiful when you get a 90% graduation rate, uh, you know, in that sense. So we need to maintain, and we need to go higher in that sense. But I want to just frame it because I'm preparing for the State of the School System Address, uh, and I want to provide why I think all this is happening. But keep in mind, I have to look at things longitudinally, and I evaluate things in terms of when I've engaged in this community, in this school system. In, in 2005, when I became your superintendent and I did a very detailed call for data, uh, I thought there was opportunities for great improvement. Our graduation rate in 2005 was 85% as a district. Uh, and our farms rate at that time was about 23%. Now, listen to what I'm about to say. 85%, 23% in 2005.
And farms is?
And free and reduced meals, meaning our poverty index. During this eight-year period, our graduation rate has gone to 90%, a five-year, five percentage point gain. And to move that needle, that many points, you have no idea how difficult that is. At the same time, our free and reduced meals rate has gone up to, close to 33%. That is a remarkable story to be told nationwide. As more challenges come in terms of poverty, as more challenges, you know, affect us in terms of the economy, our graduation rate has consistently gone up. And that's a story to be told, because one would think that there would be a direct correlation. As the poverty increases, the graduation rate would go down even further. And that's usually validated in many ways. It's a heavy lift, you know, to, as those challenges come in and all those. But we've gone in, and we've scaffold and provided supports in our district in a way, through a portfolio of offerings, uh, such as our Apex Program, opportunities to recover, our recovery model, uh, opportunities for second chances, our process product model, our Fairly Model. Uh, any child who is remotely falling through the cracks or showing evidence of dropout or at risk, we're wrapping our arms around them. And that one defining question, board members, is, how do we respond when a child is failing? That's the question I want you to ask all the time. How do we respond when a child is failing? And that defines the culture and values of this school system. And I'm very impassioned about this, and I want our community to understand. When a child is failing, do we ignore that? And do we allow it to become cumulative? Because we know that things start at the elementary level. And the first thing for dropout in graduation rate that hinders that is attendance. So when a child is not attending school, that's the first indicator that they're not taking advantage of the rich instruction that's occurring. You can't replace that interaction between a teacher and a child. The aspects of failing grades, the aspects of monitoring credits, and it becomes cumulative. If you don't intervene with urgency when that young person is failing or showing signs of weakness or at risk, then it creates problems. So how do we respond with that level? So all of these things coming together define a culture. And once you're in that rhythm, this is built now for years to come. We talk about the MMSR, the Merrill Model of School Readiness Data, at 88%, I believe, Melissa, somewhere in there, out-topping the state level. 88% of our young people are ready to enter. We talk about proficiencies at grade three, all children reading on grade level. It's another significant level to monitor. If a child can't read by the beginning of grade three, they fall further behind because the curriculum becomes more intense. And then the process goes. So recovery models in place, Apex Models in place for recovery, uh, the aspect of fairly defined programs of the pathway, this portfolio of offerings, all defined as different ladders to get over the wall, to avoid those, to, to, to navigate those hurdles. And so we should be very proud to know that our rate is so high, considering, and let me frame this, the national average is anywhere between 72 and 74%. Now, what did I just say ours was? 90. Okay, I, I have to do that for effect. Nation, 72 to 74. State, 83, 84?
83.
St. Mary's County, 90. So when you're there, and you look at the national average and state average, in comparison to what? In comparison, then we look and we break that down by school, we break it down by farm. We've got work to do, but it's a, it's a great day. We're not resting on our laurels, but this is the piece of fruit that we've been trying to get for so long. And my final comment is, in terms of this being, uh, the focusing in on our military community and the rich support, also, this is being American Education Week, that why is this happening? Very clear vision, all boats going in the right direction, all arrows pointing in the right direction, the very best people. We have some of the most phenomenal teachers I've ever interacted with intellectually. I talk about IQ and EQ, which is intellectual quotient and emotional quotient. When you combine a high IQ and a high EQ with a teacher, magic occurs, because they have that care and belief system in place, combined with their rich intelligence. And all that tutelage and caring brings out that, those self-fulfilling prophecies of, if you set that expectation high, a child will achieve it if you believe in them. And that's that self-fulfilling prophecy. The great programs and support from this board, the, the re-examining of programs, stop doing things that aren't working, begin doing things that are. But at the end of the day, it takes great people to run those programs, to put them in place, and the support, the work that occurs at this board, on behalf of these young people, every day gets us to that level. So, thank you for bearing with me during this very, uh, I didn't intend to be so impassioned today, but that's, that just goes with the territory with me. I recognize that. But this is a big deal. But it's a moment in time. We're working on the class of 2014. Uh, our goal is to continue that, to increase even higher. And any child that is failing, and I, I say this again, I said it at the Commissioners Meeting, I said it publicly, if there is any child who is in risk or in, and their life is, you know, challenged, been compromised by safety issues, um, communicate with me. Communicate with me. I've put up my email address. People know my phone number. Uh, communicate with leaders in the community so we can intervene. It's a beautiful school district. It's a beautiful county where we have the value, where we truly care about people, care about kids. And on behalf of everybody in this community, we need to celebrate that, because so goes this, that rate, so goes our community. The higher this is, the more prosperous our community is, because every child is starting at an equalized starting point, starting point, not finish point, to go where they want to go with their dreams. And if you don't have that high school diploma, just pick up and do a Google search on dropouts and read how that story tells. That's, if I had three hours, I can talk to you about that. But go do that on your own. And I'll, as I say to the community, but for board members, you always know that information. Let me end with Work Hard Be Nice, and I'm going to move quickly through these names. Uh, it's a great day. Can't wait to hear these speeches. Are you guys getting ready? Excited? Okay, I'm going to be looking at you right in the eyes, so things are going to be good. I'm going to take some pictures. Is that going to, is that good? I've already tweeted about you. I've already put the opening act out, preparing to hear them speak. So let me go through the Work Hard Be Nice so we can get to you, okay? All right, here are the Work Hard Be Nice, uh, awards board members for October. Patricia Abel, Lisa Botner, Gail Beavers, Kimberly Blackburn, David Chilson, Laurel Dietz, Chuck Dunbar, Wanda Duran, Duran, Leslie Fancella, Virginia Gatton, Sherry Godfrey, Travis Guthrie, Karen Guy, Raymond Hall, Dan Hart, Lois Howe, Marissa Kincaid, Jennifer LeBrock, Jill Mills, David O'Neal, Sharon Page, Holly Peck, Bernadette Sheech, Catherine Seguenza, Seguenza, Julia Steele, Diana White, Dieta Weinmiller, and Wendy Zimmerman. And my last comment is, I also had the opportunity to attend the traditional, um, Veterans Day Program at Letty Marshall Dent, the primary level, just absolutely beautiful to get in the mood. So it's been a wonderful week. Dr. Raspa, I typically would try to, to manage my time. There's just so much to say. And I'm, turn it back to you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mariano, for that report. Let's move into recognitions. And, uh, let's begin with American Education Week and Education Support Professionals Day. Mr. Farrell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to invite Ms. Anna Loughlin, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, Ms. Faith Abernathy, President of the Collective Education Association of St. Mary's County, and Mr. Sean Snyder, our St. Mary's County Teacher of the Year from Lenertown High School, to come forward on the red carpet. This year, American Education Week will be observed from November 18th through November 22nd. During that week, we'll also be observing Education Support Professionals Day on Wednesday, November 20th. This is a day when we recognize all educational support professionals. American Education Week is a time when we celebrate and thank those who make a difference in our schools. It is a week for publicly spotlighting how important education is to the health and well-being of our children. It is a week for continuing to build partnerships between schools and communities on behalf of all students. This year's theme, Raise Your Hand for Student Success, highlights the importance of bringing together teachers, education support staff, substitute teachers, parents, students, and community members, in a unified effort to build great public schools. Parents, community leaders, teachers, education support professionals, substitute teachers, counselors, and administrators are all an integral part of the education process, as they work together to provide a safe, healthy, and nourishing learning environment for students. American Education Week spotlights the importance of providing every child in America with a quality education, and the need for everyone to do his or her part in making our schools great. In addition to this public recognition, the central office staff, schools, and other sites will be providing various activities in recognition of American Education Week and Educational Support Professionals Day.
Okay. So come a little closer, if you would, the three of you, good friends here. Oh, well, that's fine. As close as you want to get, that's fine. I have, uh, three resolutions that have been signed by the Board of, Anna's always got something to make me laugh. Um, three resolutions, uh, here, basically the same, uh, to be presented to these individuals. And obviously, being American Education Week and building on the comments that I just made, uh, from the dais, it all ties in, why we do what we do, the acknowledgement of our employees, uh, the symbolism of having you here, Sean, representing all of our teachers in terms of this acknowledgement. It's a big day for you. You have some events with us this evening as well. And, uh, we're, we're very proud. I'm delighted to see, I was just whispering to, to Anna, to see the, uh, the theme has changed a little bit, because they've had the same one for the last couple of years. And I'm thrilled with the fact of Raise Your Hands for Student Success. So when we think symbolically, I've got a big school bus collection in my office. I don't know if I've told, I've told many of our students about this. Uh, I've got a collection of over 200 school buses. I didn't buy any of them. They've all been gifts from people. And I'm reminded every day when I walk into my office and see all those school buses on display, the symbolism of what that means. So what better symbolizes schools is, is children on a bus, you know, riding to school, to and from school. And then when I also think about Raise Your Hand for Success, that just brought a vision of children in schools. So that's a very symbolic, uh, theme. So on behalf of the board, uh, they've all signed this resolution. Whereas, public schools are the backbone of democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And that will be emphasized today. You know, once again, all this is interconnected, the freedoms that we have, uh, thanks to the, the dedication of our military and our veterans, uh, we never take that for granted. And, you know, I talk about that all the time, you know, about that we're able to, to be educated and provide the education our young people with freedom. Uh, other countries can't do that. And whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to, to product a future. And whereas, educational employees, be they substitute educators, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators, volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in common enterprise. And whereas, November 18th through 22nd has been designated as American Education Week. And the theme this year is Raise Your Hand for Student Success. And November 20th has been designated as Education Support Professionals Day. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County urges all citizens to make a commitment to the public education, to the future of St. Mary's County Public Schools, by supporting all public school activities throughout the year. Signed by the elected board members, uh, that we have in place, sitting at the dais, that fine group of individuals and myself, on this day, uh, the 13th day of November. And I present this to you, Anna Loughlin, as the President of the Teachers Association, to you, Faith Abernathy, as the President of the Collective Employees Association, and to you, Sean Snyder, as the Teacher of the Year, representing all of the teachers. And somebody fell apart there, and I'm sorry. We, we have budget issues, so I always have to say that. Uh, we're going to work on that, uh, you know, in the future. But we're very proud to, to be able to provide that honor, because it dovetails nicely with our comments this morning. Outstanding individuals overseeing outstanding programs, magic occurs for young people. And if you have these outstanding programs in place and you don't have quality individuals, then the programs fall by the wayside. And we know that every day, the dedication of our teachers, our staff, uh, and regardless of the position, you hear me say it all the time, take away your official titles, we're all leaders of children, and all working together collectively for the benefit of our young people. That 90% graduation rate, that safety factor, all those issues is why we do what we do. So, on that note, let me ask, uh, Anna Loughlin, if you'd like to say anything at this moment? Are you going to hold your comments for public comment? Uh, Faith, would you like to say anything? She would not like to say anything. And Sean, would you like to say anything at this time?
I'd just like to say-
Okay. Well, that gives me another five minutes for me to talk. So thank you very much. That was orchestrated. Uh, I grew up in 19, no, no. Very nice. Give them a round of applause, if you would. Very good. Uh, board members, I know that we'd like to get a picture with them. Is that possible now, Dr. Raspa? Or do you want to, how do you want to do that?
Well, can it wait?
Are you going to wait? Are you going to be here through the, okay, if you could just wait, and we'll get them all at once with everybody. Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes.
All right. Next, next recognition is Veterans Day Recognition. And, Dr. Marr.
Good morning, Dr. Raspa, board members, Dr. Mariano, and of course, our great students who are here this morning as well. Um, I want to just say how pleased I am to be part of this recognition this morning. As, uh, the son of a veteran who served 20 years in the United States Air Force, um, I'm so very proud to say that. And I salute, uh, my father, as well as all of the other veterans. Uh, and I know I join everyone in this room and everyone in the community saluting our veterans this great week. And, um, I'm so pleased to, uh, have our students here and introduce them. Uh, Veterans Day was celebrated throughout the nation on November 11th. And one of the longstanding activities in this community is the Veterans Day Parade, as was referenced earlier. In conjunction with this, students from Lenertown Elementary participated in a speech-writing contest entitled, "What Veterans Day Means to Me." The students gave their speeches during the ceremony on November 11th. And we're so pleased to recognize four great students who won, uh, that contest, who are here to share their speeches with us today. So, we'd love to hear from these students. Um, I'm going to call each one of them, and if they could all walk the red carpet- I'm going to call each one of them, and if they could all walk the red carpet, we'll have all four of them join here, and then each one will read their speech with us this morning. So, Kyle Goodrich. Please walk the red carpet, young men, thank you. Erin Guy. Jawan Queen. While they're coming up too, I want to introduce Courtney DeVorec, the Instructional Resource Teacher, who's there supporting them through this process, and of course, their Principal, Ms. Denise Eichel, from Lenartown Elementary. And if there are any of the parents supporting the students, please stand too, so we can recognize you and thank you.
All right, so.
The first one is going to be Kyle Goodrich. All right, you ready, Kyle? Do you want to stand up here, you can?
Veterans Day by Kyle Goodrich, that's me. In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row. The lark still bravely singing fly scarce heard amid the guns below. Lieutenant Commander John McCray wrote this poem. He, like many and others, fought for what there was to win, land, freedom, and to avenge what had already been lost. Veterans Day marks the signing of the armistice between Germany and the Allied Nations. I think that Veterans Day not only marks the armistice of the two powers, but to honor the alive and dead soldiers of America and other nations. Most other countries celebrate Veterans Day as Remembrance Day, a day in which they honor only their fallen soldiers, but not their alive and dead warriors. I often on Veterans Day honor American warriors more than ones from other nations, but recently I have realized that they deserve respect as well. Many have fought beside the United States military in long wars. Many foreign, even the smallest country with the most beaten soldiers can fight, and many have with America. Many foreign people have died or been injured for America or their country. Why should we not honor these great soldiers? Our soldiers have fought with them and done the exact same. Why should we not honor both? Often, bad times bring out the best in people and make us realize why our veterans are so important. On September 11th, 2001, our country was attacked by terrorists. Veterans like David Karns, a Marine, rushed into burning buildings to rescue survivors while the flames were licking on his feet. Many people died that day, including veterans, as the Pentagon was attacked. Yet our soldiers fought to rescue men and women inside the structures and buildings. Though the actual attack was over within hours, veterans continued to fight. As a result of these terrorist acts, our country entered a war. The military met the terrorists at their homes, and some are still there fighting, still fighting to protect us. You never know who a veteran is. It could be your mentor, your teacher, your swimming instructor, your dad, your mom, the guy who sits on the street with a sign that says, Got Odd Jobs? However, if you figure out they are a veteran, honor them. They are worth the two words, thank you. Don't just miss this news like it's unimportant. Honor them. Veterans Day is a day of honor, not just to the soldiers in World War I's commitment and sacrifices, but to all soldiers, living, dead, retired, active, black, white, it doesn't matter. They are all veterans. They are all worth honoring. Remember, they made sacrifices for you, for us, and for everyone. I think they should be honored, foreign or American. That is what I feel Veterans Day is about. Honor them because you need them. Honor them because they keep fighting and don't quit.
Nice job, Kyle. And next up is Erin Guy.
What Veterans Day Means To Me. When I picture Veterans Day, the first thing I see is gunfire from war. But I realize that anyone can be a veteran. You don't only have to fight. Veterans can help injured people, help with ships, or help with airplanes. It could be anyone, including your neighbors. Two of my neighbors are veterans, and they seem like regular people. I'm glad to have them in my neighborhood and that they serve for our country. Veterans are their hero, are our heroes, but they don't have to be different. They're still normal people. They can be your neighbor, teacher, family member, or even your dentist. When I see our flag, red, white, and blue, I wonder why did they choose those colors? I know, red means love and blood. I think of how, I think of all the people who love our country and enough to sacrifice their lives for it. White means purity and honesty. I think of how people respect our country and show honesty by admitting when they've made a mistake, instead of telling a lie. Blue means trust and loyalty. I think of how people care about our country by following our laws, serving in military and working in government. I think of Veterans Day as a great day and a great holiday. It's the best. I want veterans here and gone to feel the respect, excuse me, I and other people give them every day. Every single day, someone might die as a veteran. That shows you how much veterans care for our country. Veterans are strong, courageous, they fight in war and stand up for our country. It makes me feel at peace because they are so strong, and they will never be beaten. From now on forever, veterans are always brave and heroic. They should be honored. I love to watch the news and see veterans coming home from war. However, some do not. Tears fill my eyes as I think of families waiting for them, but they never come. They will always be brave and mighty, as they soar through the sky or down here on earth. They will always be remembered. When we have veterans, our country has liberty, independence, and our country is united. Thank you, veterans.
Nice job, Erin. And next is Jawan Queen.
Veterans Day. It's a privilege to honor veterans on Veterans Day. Even if they do not get to fight, it shows courage to even think about being in the Army, Navy, and all the other armed forces. It shows how much they want freedom. It shows that they are willing to make tough choices to leave home for our country. It shows that they're, they want the world to be a better place. That's what I think, too. Veterans are risk takers because they risk their lives to perform duties. One thing veterans do is fight for our freedom. I am surprised that they are willing to risk their lives for us. Veterans also rescue people who are getting attacked or are in war. That shows that they can work with anyone. Veterans help protect borders and help in disasters, which tells us we are safe. When I think of Veterans Day, I think of the people who volunteer to join the military. I know some veterans like Mr. and Mrs. Donahile. That makes me feel safe in our school. I'm, there are also veterans in the Navy, Marines, Air Force, Army, and the Coast Guard. Veterans are those in the military who serve us when we need them. Veterans, it makes us feel protected because they are strong. Veterans are on a mission to fight for a free country so we can go to school. Also, they're on a mission for freedom, to fight for our free country so we can go to school. Also, they're on a mission for freedom. They help protect other states and countries. Veterans are trained and prepared for action. They are ready for anything. They are coordinated, they have athleticism and ability to problem solve, which reassures me that they'll keep our country safe. I am happy that I live in a free country, and so many veterans are willing to keep it that way.
Nice job. And we have Noah Reddihoff.
Imagine you're in World War I, the Great War. You're fighting hour after hour, day after day, fighting for your country's freedom. This was reality for thousands of soldiers. We should give all veterans the credit they deserve. Veterans Day started when the armistice was made on the 11th hour of the 11th day in the 11th month in 1918. They celebrated the end of the fighting and honored the veterans that served throughout the war. Now we honor all veterans in the United States military. Military veterans risk their lives for our freedom. They support and defend our country so that we do not have to fight for ourselves. They also help our country and many other countries through natural disasters like tornadoes, tsunamis, and even hurricanes. Without veterans, our country would not be protected, and we would be helpless. It is nice to remember and honor veterans because they do so much for us, to make our lives easy, and we do not have to worry about being unprotected. We like to remember the veterans when they are away, so we honor and celebrate them. President Wilson proclaimed the day should be filled with solemn pride and the heroism of those who died, and the country service with the gratitude for victory. I have relatives that were in World War II, the Vietnam War, and many other wars. My great-grandpa, Charles Batesbrook, was a rear admiral in the United States Navy. His leg was shot off, and he was taken prisoner of war for many years. Another one of my grandpas, Jeff McLellan, was in the Vietnam War as a tank commander in the Army, and he was in many battles. I remember them on Veterans Day, and I'm proud to be their grandson. Veterans Day is important to me because veterans do so much for us. It is important we honor them because they help us through disasters and fight for us if we do not have to. What do you do to celebrate Veterans Day?
All right, Dr. Martorano, would you join me here to say a few words and to recognize these great students?
Do you want to be closer, if you would? So, board members, were you impressed?
Very.
I know you were. I know you heard them on Monday as well, and we are so proud. I sit there with great pride. First of all, what I want to show you is, see, I have all these things on the wall for our board members, and this is all done with intentionality, it shows our focus in terms of the school system, everything in here's got true symbolism. But there's a chart back here that I use all the time. It's called the Essential Survival Skills For The 21st Century, and it's all the things that I want you to have, be equipped with, as you go through your educational process. And the number one issue on here is Effective Oral and Written Communication Skills. So when we frame this, this will be a day that you will always remember, so I'm going to talk to you just briefly. When I was a child, I was in a, what was called a ninth grade declamation contest. It was a speech contest, and it was in front of the whole school, and I had to stand up in front of everybody, and I can remember that like it was yesterday. It was very impactful. And you've had to present these in front of your school, didn't you? You had to present them in front of your students, you had to present them in front of the community members at the Veterans Day Parade, and now you've had to do this today. And it's a very courageous thing, first of all, to be able to prepare yourself with a level of intellect and preparation, with a level of poise and delivery, poise and grace and delivery, and then being able to project in a way to all the individuals in the audience, and to maintain your composure at a level, because for some people, this is a very nerve-wracking experience, speaking in front of people. You were calm, you were very clear, very smart, and you had a message, and I listened very intently to each one of you, and you're going to take this back as a memory, so if I communicate with you in 20 years, you're going to say, remember that time I came to the board meeting and did my Veterans Day speech? You're going to reflect on this. I'm just telling you, you'll remember this day because of what you've done is very courageous, and it's a very high-level activity. So I praise you at that level and commend you, and my goal is to have all of our young people in our schools have an opportunity to do public speaking, because it's a, it's a skill that's going to carry you through life. My son asked me one day, he said, what do you do, Dad, all day? He says, all you do is give speeches. And I said, yeah, that's right. I have to talk about the school system all day long and promote all the things that we're doing in terms of our school system, so a very important skill. So on behalf of our board members, we want to recognize you for your, just your outstanding content in your speeches, your personalization, the focus on the veterans, how wonderful you all look today. I'm just so proud, I'm just overjoyed. So I want to provide you with the day to memorialize this, and I expect that you're going to do this. I don't like when people brag, but I do like when people inform and are proud about the work that they've done. So I'm going to give you permission, with your parents obviously endorsing this, so I don't want them to do anything. This is a certificate that I want you to, to, one, memorialize this day, your participation. I want you to maybe think, if you can get some copies of this, to put it on your refrigerator at home, okay? I want you to think about the holidays coming up, and if there's that, you know, just that opportunity when there's no conversation going on, say, hey, did I tell you I gave a Veterans Day speech and show me your certificate? You know, just present that, and then to give your speech again. And if it comes up again at the Christmas holidays, just, just tell everybody that you did this, and maybe, you may want to have an insert in your Christmas card or something this year. I'm just giving you some ideas, that's just between us, but I really want people to know how important this is for you, so that was just our little moment, I hope nobody else will listen to what I just said. But first recognition is to memorialize Kyle Goodrich for your participation in this and the outstanding job, and love the tie. Did you tie that today yourself?
No, my dad did it over his thing, my mom tightened it up.
Okay, okay, that's another skill, so you know how to tie a tie. Well, we'll teach you that, too. I mean, I'm all about the, you gotta look good, you gotta feel good, you gotta have the right, I mean, we'll talk about that later, okay? All right, very good. There you go. Give Kyle an outstanding round of applause. Erin Guy, you've got a beautiful smile. Come on over, if you would. How, how are you? Good? Just come over here a little bit, should I get it, he can give me a little bit of information. Got your red, white, and blue on today, everything looks wonderful. How did you feel, given this speech, being selected to do this?
I feel kind of confident because I already did it at the Veterans Day Parade, and I used to be really nervous. I'm still kind of nervous here, but...
I can't tell. But what I liked, you know, you used a really important word with me today, which is, I felt confident. And what we want all of our students and our young people to feel is confident in their abilities to do whatever they want to do, and you've really set yourself off on a really trajectory to propel yourself into the future. Great skills, and you didn't seem nervous at all, you were really calm. So we want to memorialize this day for you, one in pictures, we're going to take some pictures here momentarily, the group, as well as them with their certificate, that I told you what I want you to do with that as well, too, okay? All right, so give Erin a round of applause, if you would. Jawan Queen, come on over. Like, you're tied, too, all the red, white, and blue in the suit, you're looking, you really look good, okay? So I'm really impressed. And so, how do you feel about participating in this? Come on over here closer with me.
I felt a little bit nervous, but I kind of got over it.
You kind of got over it, so, you know, you ever heard the expression, practice makes perfect?
Yes.
So you'll be a master at this before no long, you'll probably want to give speeches at your house, you know, just set up a little, like, when I was a little kid, I set up a podium at my house, and imagine that, you know, and it would turn into this, who knew? You can be the next, you know, superintendent, the next president, whatever it is, but keep, keep speaking. I mean, trust me, it's a great skill. I haven't stopped speaking my entire life. It's a wonderful skill, and you've done a wonderful job, and your, 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 absolute essay was absolutely phenomenal. So I'm very proud of you, and I want you to have this certificate, remember what I told you to do with that as well, and your family members are here today, your mom. Give him a round of applause, if you would, as well. Noah, come on over, you look all good as well, you got all, you have red folder, everything looking good, and hair all done here today, did your dad help you with that? Oh, he did. Okay, I'm going to have a talk with him, he's somebody, he's, he's a, he's a big shot in the school district as well, one of our assistant principals here today. That's your dad and your mom here as well, mom and dad here, so we're very pleased to have them. How did you feel about all this? And I'm going to ask you, how did you prepare for this big event? Because I'm always curious how young people prepare for speaking and, you know, oral communication. How did you do this?
Just kept practicing.
Did you do it over and over? Did you look in a mirror? Did you practice, did you ever do that trick?
Yeah.
You did that, so all those are great techniques to do, and at first, were you a little bit nervous?
Kind of.
Yeah, but you were cool, I mean, you were calm today, cool and calm, I could tell. All four of you said, if you were nervous, I couldn't tell. I liked the confidence, and you were prepared, and you practiced, and then your personalization and your story really touched me with the references to your grandparents. I didn't know that piece, and so I'm glad you shared that with us. You've really grown up, I've known you forever, and watching you grow up, I'm not getting any older, am I? Good answer, good answer. Very good. So we want to give you this certificate, remember what I told you to do with that as well, and we congratulate you. Give Noah a round of applause, if you would. All right, so, board members, a fabulous way to cap off this week. Lenartown Elementary has this wonderful tradition. The beautiful thing is, in the next couple of years, we'll have the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School opening up, and we'll have some, have to kind of divide this up a little bit, because have two schools in the town, and have, how we do this tradition and expand it in the future years, but they did a fabulous job, and we're so proud of you. So I think now for a picture, Dr. Raspa, would be appropriate.
Yes, the board will take a break now, and we'll have this, two pictures taken. Okay, wonderful. So, from one of... We will reconvene at this time. Have some sad news. A very close friend, not just to me, but to many, many people in the community. A person who loves St. Mary's County, loved the school system. Mr. Kenny Demet, former two-term commissioner, passed away early this morning. Kenny served on the Board of County Commissioners for two terms. He was also a member of the St. Mary's County Public Schools... He was also a member of the St. Mary's County Public Schools for 20 years. He was a bus driver and a trainer. Let's take a few moments of silence at this time. Thank you very much. Pass this down to Secretary. There's no public hearing today. Next on the agenda is public comment. Madam Secretary, we have people sign now for public. Thank you. The board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. The board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students, since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The board encourages speakers to present written statements to the board secretary, who will distribute copies to all board members. Madam Secretary?
Good morning, members of the board, guests, and members of the audience. In honor of American Education Week, I'm here to talk to you about "An Elephant in the Room." Lee Iacocca once said, "In a completely rational society, the best of us would be teachers, and the rest of us would have to settle for something else." Not everyone can be a successful teacher. Not everyone has the desire to follow that path. Unfortunately, that path has now become so difficult that even those with the desire find themselves unable to meet the challenges. As this week of celebration draws near, I feel compelled to make you all aware of the challenges that are causing people to pack it up and leave the profession. I want you to listen, because I hear too much lip service about how difficult our lives have become, but there are never any solutions, and things only get worse every year. If something doesn't give soon, I fear that people will stop going into the profession because the sacrifice is simply becoming too great. It's not that people love their students any less or that we no longer hold the lofty goals that brought us to the profession, it's that the profession has become so demanding that it actually sucks the life right out of us. Our health suffers, our families suffer, and our quality of life suffers. We all know going in that our jobs would require more than the 35 hours that we are compensated for. A 35-hour week became 45 hours of labor when I was a novice. It's now 60 to 80 per week. They're working the equivalent of two full-time jobs while being compensated for one. It isn't even so much the salary as the fact that the personal sacrifice has become a burden that is no longer bearable, no matter how big your shoulders. Add all the demands that you have to justify your existence through endless hours of paperwork to the stress of high-stakes testing, and the knowledge that someone else's performance could end your career. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, 33% of new teachers leave the profession after three years, and 46 are gone in five. Of those leaving the profession each year, 56 leave because of job dissatisfaction. These are people who came to the profession full of hope and energy, looking forward to spending their adult lives in the service of children. The United Teaching Profession has been warning you for years about the shortsighted foolishness of the path we're taking. Everyone said it was because we were afraid of being held accountable. And now, we have a workforce laboring at a pace that they cannot sustain. Politicians and corporate pundits decided they knew better how to improve public schools than professionals who work in them. Legislation like "No Child Left Behind" and "Race to the Top" have decimated our ranks and left the rest of us beaten and demoralized. So, during this important time of recognition, I want to challenge you, you, the honorable people, to do the right thing. I want you to visit with me, and I'll set you up to shadow a teacher from beginning to the end of their workday, and then I want you to start talking about how we're going to fix this. I also challenge local government officials to do the same, and I intend to contact and invite them also. John F. Kennedy once said, "The course of civilization is a race between catastrophe and education. In a democracy such as ours, we must make sure that education wins the race." Your runners are dropping in the field. Do you want to win this race or turn a blind eye? My office is a stone's throw away from here in that direction. I'll be waiting for you to visit. Every elected official in the county needs to open their eyes and take in accounting of the toll the race to be number one is taking on the staff who is delivering that distinction. And just to make sure that you are all able to shine the light on this situation, I have for each of you my very own personalized pen, complete with light, LED light, and my new business card, so you can find me, call me, email me. Just call me. Don't be afraid. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That'll be good. We can call you and set up our trip around the school. I'll shadow, yeah, a teacher to shadow, although I only did it for 25 years. Seven hours, eight hours a day and weekends.
Thank you.
That's nice, Anna, very nice. Now, I can see around the house at night.
I keep one in my purse so I can get into my house, but my husband always permits to turn the porch light on for me.
Well, this is nice. Thank you. I've got to get my jacket clean.
I want to get one of these pens with the life of it.
So, you can find me in the dark.
Thank you, Miss Anna.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amy Reiger.
It's going to be very funny. I got it all set up.
Good morning, Dr. Raspe. Thank you. Is picking me up okay? First of all, I'm sorry for your loss. Keep you in our prayers. My name is Amy Reiger, and my associate Cindy Bellas and my daughter Lydia and I are here this morning to say thank you. I represent a youth outreach organization this morning called Young Life. I wear a lot of hats. And Cindy serves on the Board of Bridges of St. Mary's County. It's an after-school help organization out of First Saints Church. Three of my five children have been blessed to be in St. Mary's County Public Schools, both at Spring Ridge and at Leonard Town High School. First of all, Dr. Matarano, thank you for enthusiasm, your spirit, your love for our children is contagious, and we are very honored to be under your leadership. I would also like to extend thanks to Angela Fulp and Marie Montgomery, our wonderful principals of my immediate experience. Sarah Crowder is a counselor at Leonard Town High School, who has worked tirelessly on my children's behalf as well as others. Bonnie Bevan coached my son Bobby in both basketball and the rhythm club, and that has been experiences enriched our entire family. We owe Bonnie a great, great debt of gratitude. Thank you for the grant funding work and the after-school program, also for our resource officers and their service to our community. The relative peace and safety that our students enjoy here in St. Mary's County is due in large part to the good work being done by these and many other people. I have good news for you today. There are many people in our county who share your passion for the well-being and character development of our young people, and who are working in community faith-based organizations designed to encourage and to mentor them. Although we thankfully do not have a full-blown gang problem, per se, here in St. Mary's County, I propose that our St. Mary's County Public Schools can apply the wisdom in a report on gang prevention from the Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, which reads, "Primary prevention refers to services and supports that reach the entire population and communities. Government, local schools, community organizations, or faith-based organizations may deliver these services. The first level of prevention involves changing the experiences that propel children and adolescents into gangs or other deviant behavior. It involves strengthening the core social institutions such as schools and families, which sometimes let youth down in the early years of their lives." And I have that report in reference in my written comments. So, today, I'm asking nothing from you, except that you, as a school board, continue to consider our faith community as an ally in your service to the youth of our country. Please interpret as liberally as possible the laws governing reference to and involvement in such organizations as Young Life, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Southern Maryland Youth Ministries, and Bridges of St. Mary's County. Please help keep enthusiasm for faith-based work alive in our community. Thank you. We appreciate everything you do. You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Raspe?
Yes, sir.
May I comment?
Yes.
I really appreciate you being here today, and this board acknowledges the involvement of our churches in our community, our faith-based organizations. I really appreciate your advocacy. I appreciate the words that you were so reflective in terms of your individualizing, your comments. I know your children well through the system. The enthusiasm of your drummer is contagious as well. But I want the community to know that, you know, when you think about, we always use the over-trite expression, "It takes a village." We can't use that enough in many ways, because it truly does take a village to raise a child. And when you think about the number of hours that a child is in school, if you cumulatively look at from a child's time from pre-K to 12, we only have the children in school 10% of their time. You know, they spend the majority of time at home, on weekends, in communities, and churches and faith-based organizations play a vital role to that. We've engaged at that level of bringing in our individuals from our churches. We're very supportive of the efforts and acknowledging what can be done in schools and what can't be done. There's a level of latitude that can occur at that level, and, you know, we constantly have that dialogue. So, I'm very pleased with the support of what is occurring with our faith-based organizations and our churches, and recognize if there's anything that I can do to be involved in that, to advance that in any way, to encourage the communities in whatever ways, because we want to have that level of connectedness, because at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. You know, the betterment of our community, the betterment of our young people, and the betterment of the less fortunate, and those who are in positions where they're of more advanced means, per se, the responsibility to give back to the individuals who are from less, from humble means in that sense, is very critical. So, I appreciate you being here today. I typically don't ask to speak after an individual speaks, and the board allows me to do that on occasion if I have something to say. But I really want to encourage you to take the word back of how this message was received today by this board. I can see from my peripheral vision there are nods of approval in that sense, and let people know that we're all in this together in whatever way that I can help. And thank you as well, back there, being here, too. So, I know you're not speaking, but you were acknowledged. So, great to see you, and thanks, and tell all your kids to say hello.
Thank you, I will. Thank you very much. That's all, Dr. Raspe.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Great, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. First action item for this morning, its policies, Mr. Norris, his policies DFA, DFB, DG, and DIDA. Second reading.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are here for the second reading for those four policies. We did not receive any comments from either the public hearing or in the emails. And so, just a very quick overview, the policy DFA was originally tied to revenues from investment, retail investment policy, and there has been no changes in the language since we last read it into the record.
Before you move
Yes, ma'am.
off of that one, I just have a quick question, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
The, under the policy statement,
Right.
the second sentence in red, the first sentence in red says, "The Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services and Human Resources or designee shall monitor and invest such funds as available without endangering prompt payment of charges against the school system."
Yes, ma'am.
It then goes on to say, "The Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services and Human Resources or designee shall monitor and invest such funds as available."
As available, right.
Is that a redundancy we need there? Am I, I'm missing something somehow?
Well, there's two pieces to that. In other words, in terms of having the money available to pay our bills, that's that first sentence. The second sentence, then, as the money is available, we will invest it. We invest overnight. We invest through MSD related activities so that we do that. So, the intent was, and maybe we can fix that language a little bit, is to say that we won't invest the funds and endanger our standing in terms of in the community to pay our bills. The second part, then, is to invest the funds properly. So, that was the intent. Now, if we can, we can go back and bring it back and kind of...
It's clear to me, it's a clarity issue in terms of knowing, but if the board is not seeing it as clearly, we can adjust the language to be more specific, to provide maybe a little background.
Can do.
Based on current...
I thought we'd had some conversation about this, so maybe I'm just missing.
Based on explanation here, Mr. O'Meara, what are your thoughts?
I thought Mr. Norris's explanation was clear to me. I don't have a burning desire on it. I could read it either way, but I don't think the actual written language is detrimental, so I'm inclined to accept it as written.
That's fine. I just thought I would ask that question.
Is that okay with you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Second policy, DFB, is a new policy on invoicing. We did not have that in the past, and so, we simply wanted to put that in to make sure that we were capable and had the authority to invoice for the materials and supplies that we need to operate the school system. So, this simply gives the school system the authority to do that. And again, there were no comments on DFB. The updated depository of funds, DG, we tried to take into account here all of the accounts that we had, whether they were school accounts or they were central office accounts. You do know that we have a school activity manual that we update every year that provides direction to the schools for their funds. And then, we do have our own federal ID number and the fact that we do not allow PTAs, you know, other outside agencies to use that, so that we do have that. Again, no comments on depository of funds. And then, finally, DIDA. This is the capital. Capitalization of equipment, now it's all fixed assets and physical inventory. And again, the biggest thing here is, is that we've made the minimum in terms of our inventory control from one... inventory control from 1,000 to 2,500. Again, though, on Mr. Corns's side with all of the computers and the whiteboards and those things, they'll still maintain that inventory because they are special equipment. And then in terms of the physical nature, our fixed assets, in terms of what we have to depreciate, that's going to be at the $5,000 level. And you'll get into that, like with the Walter Fancis Duke Elementary School, we'll have all the fixed assets in there for not only the building, but the, you know, 20-year depreciation on the HVAC systems and all those kinds of things. So that's what's in there. Again, no comments from the public on DIDA. And we're seeking the board's approval to approve those four policies.
Mr. O'Mealy, usually, usually.
Yes, I read them and they're sound.
Okay. Any questions or comments for any board members? Peter?
No, thank you.
Mr. Crosby?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
I asked, thank you for answering.
Thank you.
Dr. Monterano?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I can't.
This is action item, we need a motion. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve policy DFA, DFB, DG, and DIDA as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Next action item is policy ECF, EDB, EECD, FEE, and FFB. Second reading. Did I get that right, Mrs. Howe? Yes, okay, thank you. We have Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Howe and Mr. Corns on this one.
I'm sorry, getting the computer back up.
Okay.
I need to get some technological challenge. There we go, whatever. With the board's approval, I actually have three policies, and they're separated by two in the middle. With the board's approval, I would like to go ahead and proceed with the three I have, if that would be okay, so that we have three presenters on this particular action item.
Just make sure you name them.
I will do so.
As you get into.
Yes.
Thank you.
The first policy I have before you is policy ECF, Energy Conservation. All three policies have gone through the first reading on October 9th, public hearing on October 29th. This policy did not have any comments at the public hearing. And what we have brought forward under policy ECF for a change was a title change from Chief Operating Officer to Deputy Superintendent of Schools and Operations. We did have a clerical change from school to schools, and that is the substantive change to this policy was a title change.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Crosby?
No.
The next policy I have is policy FFB, which is Names on Dedication Placks. This policy, again, went through first reading on October 9th, public hearing on October 29th, and did not have any comments at that time. And again, this policy was brought forward, again, for title changes for three of the titles. Chief Operating Officer to Deputy Superintendent of Schools and Operations. Coordinating Supervisor was changed to Director for Capital Planning and Green Schools. And Supervisor of Design and Construction was changed to Director. So substantive change was just titles.
All right, any questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
No questions.
Mrs. Washington?
None.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
No.
Here.
No, thank you.
Okay.
And the final policy I have before you today is policy FEE, which is Site Acquisition. It does have a title change. The old title was Site Acquisition. The new title would be Site Selection and Acquisition. It was brought over into the new format. So the purpose would be, the purpose of this policy is to establish a process and criteria for selection and acquisition of school sites. And the substantive change was to establish a policy statement, which talks about the approach to selection and acquisition for schools and to authorize the board, the board authorizing the superintendent of schools to develop a site selection acquisition process. It went through first reading on October 9th, public hearing on the 29th of October with no comment, and has been through, all three have been through legal review.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
No questions.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
No.
Peter?
No questions.
Okay.
Then those are the three I'm bringing forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Thompson, you're next.
And board members, as we're transitioning to Mr. Thompson to bring his information up, please note that a few of those policies were just title changes only. Remember, we're still in the process of implementing those to bring those to you through consent. Just be aware of that. That's still new to us.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the second reading of policy EEACD. And from the first reading, there were a couple changes that you guys had recommended. So we changed and added contractor-owned school buses, and then also added in the track line and the student handbook and code of conduct, the
Perfect.
this item and this item.
Very good.
This is referenced. And there was no comments at the public hearing on it, and Mr. O'Mealy has reviewed this policy. Are there any questions with this?
Mrs. Allen?
Just thank you for making those adjustments to this policy. I think it makes it much clearer, and it directs anyone who goes to it where exactly they can find the information with respect to behaviors. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Washington?
No questions.
Mr. Matthews?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Okay, fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Corns?
So we have the second reading of EDB, which was authorized use of school materials. We have, we had no, we had no recommended changes, though we are instituting another, working on another policy that came about for some other things. But we had no public comment for any change of this policy as well. There were very, this was adopted very early on. We've done some updates to just make sure that we've covered up any of the shortfalls that had about microcomputers in this. We've inserted the network usage standards for individuals to understand what are our appropriate uses.
Okay, questions or comments? Peter?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Crosby?
No, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No comments.
Mrs. Allen?
Well done.
Thank you.
Dr. Monterano, you have a
No, I'm fine with all this.
Mr. O'Mealy?
Very important, and working with Mr. Corns on this, and it's something that's a necessary change.
Okay, and you've reviewed all these policies as
The issues getting ready.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve these policies as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next action item is the design award for Phase II Permanent Erosion Repairs for Esperanza Middle School. Mr. Harway?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board members, you recall in September, you awarded the construction contract for the Phase I soil stabilization at Esperanza Middle School. I'm glad to report that that work is currently underway and going, going very well today. Today's action item is to award the design contract for Phase II, which is the permanent solution to the soil issues, erosion issues at Esperanza Middle School. The scope of the Phase II work will involve regrading the softball field. It will involve installing some underground drains, and then a series of manholes that go down the slope to convey any surface water all the way down to the flow line, which is at the toe of those slopes. The scope will also probably involve an easement with an adjoining property owner in order to fully convey that water to where it really needs to be discharged in the future. We are proposing the continuation of services with Whitney Bailey Cox and Magnani. That firm did the feasibility study for us in March of last year that allowed us to obtain the capital fund for this project. They also did the Phase I workforce that allowed us to more comprehensively deal with the soil stabilization, especially building those gabion walls where the most severe erosion has taken place. That Phase I design also helped us clarify the scope of the Phase II. We thought going into this project that there were wetlands that would be impacted by this project. Through the Phase I, we were able to find a determination that those wetlands are only ephemeral and therefore do not fall under the domain of the Army Corps of Engineers. So that substantially cuts the permitting time and the cost for design services. So the Phase II engineering scope will involve this fundamental design, the permitting, still going to be a heavily permitting activity on this project with MDE, but also the construction administration. Those three groups comprise what we call the basic services. And you see from the breakdown that we gave you as part of your agenda item, those fees are about $44,000. That's about 7% of the anticipated construction cost for Phase II. And that range of 7% is generally what we've seen on major civil engineering projects like Oakville and Mechanicsville, which we've recently done. In addition to that, we're proposing that the geotechnical investigation be the responsibility of the designers as well as the topographical survey. So those are, those are considered additional services that we're bundling together as part of this. And then we have a small reimbursable allowance as part of that project. Those items add about another $19,000 of fees. So based on the experience that we've had with this firm, the performance on both the feasibility and the Phase I, they clearly demonstrated expertise in these kinds of problems, and the continuity of the effort, we're proposing to use Whitney Bailey Cox and Magnani in the amount of $64,569. And in addition to that, we ask for a small contingency, design contingency of $5,000. So with that being said, if it was your approval today, we should complete the design by early spring, and then we would anticipate beginning the Phase II permanent repairs to the erosion to commence this summer. Ms. Allen, take your question.
Okay, questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
No questions, but I want to commend you on the work that you've done in bringing this forward. I think the fact that you were able to, that your suggestion that we phased this so that the emergent, emergency work could be done quickly, and yet that, sort of true to the superintendent's go slow to go fast, I think is well done in this project, most especially. We know that St. Mary's County has many steep slopes and highly erodible soils. It's something that we have to deal with, especially with some of our older schools. And it, it's, this is much overdue in trying to address this, and I think that you make a good case for continuing with this firm on very sound grounds. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. The stabilization and the restoration is needed, so thank you for getting this work done in a timely, yet efficient manner.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
So you anticipate pretty much everything being done by the end of the summer?
I think some of the work will probably go into the fall, quite honestly. I mean, it's pretty tough terrain, and a lot of this will depend on the negotiations on the easement as well.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Yeah, I want to thank you for this important project that you're working on. At the time when it started, you talked about maybe having to go in, go into people's yards, maybe. Did you have to go in anybody's yard?
Not for the phase that we're currently
Yes.
under construction with. But we will go to an adjoining property owner to see if we can negotiate a drainage easement, which would be in the best interest, I think, of both parties. So that's what I was referring to.
But we can do it even without that.
We can. It's just a better solution if we're able to
It's easier this way.
Yeah.
But you've done a good job. Everything's efficient, fast. What can I say? Very good. Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay. I want to say thank you. I remember seeing the, I know you had a picture, it was a chart of the erosion and how large it was. I didn't actually get a chance to go out and see it myself, but it was a very large project, and thank you for going and getting it fixed. Appreciate it.
Mr. Harway? How permanent, it says permanent erosion. How permanent is this going to be? Is this going to take care of this problem with this erosion in that particular area, behind that school?
Well, we're going to be doing a topographical survey of that terrain all through that area. That's point number one, to make sure we fully understand what's happening there. The solution will require some maintenance. It's the major maintenance is keeping the manholes clean and making sure that where the water is discharged, it has a proper outfall. But these really are the two major areas that jeopardize the use of our property.
Okay, so you're fairly comfortable with what we're doing and where we're headed with this?
I truly am. We spent a lot of time thinking about this and getting the right people involved, so I am.
Okay, good. Okay, board members, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the design award for Phase II Permanent Erosion Repairs for Esperanza Middle School to Whitney Bailey Cox and Magnani in the amount of $64,569, and further authorize a design contingency of $5,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harway.
You got a double second on that, Larry. Over exuberance there. See, I told you, the board's favorite presenter, Larry Harway.
Mr. Norris, information items, post-employment benefits, OPEB update, and you also have 2014 October financial report. So why don't you just go ahead and begin with the OPEB update and just go right on into the financial report, unless we have some questions or comments to be made by the board members.
Thank you. This is our annual update for our OPEB, and some of the information is already familiar to you, but we're going to go back over it just a little bit. In terms of what OPEB is, that's the other post-employment benefits. These are for our retirees. It's mandated by GASB 45. It provides a secure health benefit for our retirees, and it'll be fully funded in 30 years. So you started in 2008, and so you're just kind of getting started with the whole thing. We are a member of the MAVE Investment Trust. We now have 10 counties. There was nine. We have one of the Western Maryland counties has come in, and they've put an initial investment of $10 million into their program. There is a centralized staff at MAVE that handles our investments, and we have Wells Fargo that is the actual company that does the actual investing for us. In terms of what we have, we have an investment policy with the trust. It details responsibility of all parties. It establishes the basis that we evaluate the results. For example, at our last meeting, we have one investment firm that we are no longer going to be using, not the firm, but the actual stock portfolio, and that's going to be changing because they have not met their five-year goals, and so we're going to be making some changes there. It defines the goals and objectives. It provides the guidance. It ensures prudent management assets. And we have the investment horizon 10 to 15 years that we're looking at, because this is meant to be in perpetuity. So it's not just putting
So it's not just putting the money in for 30 years. It's a matter of that interest building up so that as we keep putting people into the retire system, that it will be self-supporting and you will no longer have to double book because right now you have money that take care of the retirees for this year, and then you also put money into the system for OPEB. So in 30 years, providing we're fully funded, you won't have to have that double expenditure.
And Greg, I think that's the basic point. You know, for years, I've been challenged by the fact of getting traction on this particular topic, and that's still pervasive, you know, in other school districts. It's something that's way in the future, kick the can down the road, whatever expression you want to use. And people don't want to really look that far down. It's hard to get traction with our first-year employees because it's so long far away. But the reality is, we can talk all the technicality. What this is doing is building, in many ways, a trust fund
Yes, sir.
for our employees because we are an organization that provides other post-employment benefits. And by virtue of doing that, this trust fund will then, in true terms, will generate enough income from the interest, regardless of what those interest rates are at the time, that will sustain this effort as opposed to contributing through the operating budget year after year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, just like the pension system.
Exactly. So, I mean, that's an important part, board members, when, you know, sometimes this is a very hard thing to explain to people because they don't understand why we're putting all this money ahead. But the basic gist of it is, we are an organization that provides post-employment benefits and therefore mandated to keep up with the driving, rising costs of healthcare in the future.
On this slide, we simply just laid out the OPEB contribution since you put it in 2008. One thing on the 2014, you see it's asterisked, budgeted. The third, when the Board of County Commissioners approved your budget for FY14, they had three motions. The third motion was that if there's any money left over in the fixed charges category in health insurance, that that extra money would go towards OPEB. That amount is approximately $90,900. So in addition to this $4,955,000, there will be another $90,900 that will also go into OPEB, so it will put you at $5 million for your contribution for FY14. And I would imagine that's probably something they're going to be, you know, looking at on an annual basis. So just so you know, it's not in here yet because that's part of their motion, but when we do send our OPEB payment in, it'll be the 4.9 million plus the $90,900.
But Mr. Norris, I also want to emphasize this board, we're also going to approach that very judiciously. You know, that's part of their motion with minimal input on our part. We may need to manage those dollars differently at that period of time, and I'll have to make a case to this board why we can't comply with that motion and have that discussion with the Board of County Commissioners. That's just in my estimation. I accept it, but the reality is, I don't know what things are going to be there in the future at the end of each fiscal year cycle. This could have a bearing, and we may need to balance and use those dollars for other expenditures in our own operating budget as we're reconciling the end-of-the-year account. Correct?
Yes, sir, yes. For 2014, there's two numbers here. $2,955,000 is the money that the county is putting in, and you are putting in $2 million. That number on the county side will become $2 million for FY15 as you develop your budget because that $955,256 is that offset for the teacher pension plan. You remember two years ago when we started this, they gave us extra OPEB money so that as they move forward and as the teacher retirement monies increased, and it will be $4,35,000 next year, and then it goes to $5 million before, and then this way they don't have to keep coming back and adding more money. They simply assisted you with OPEB. That additional $955,000 will go away in '15, and they've promised to put $2 million in towards the board's OPEB payment in FY15. And then in '16, they'll give you the rest of the money. Let's see how that goes for the, you know, $5 million, whatever. And then in '17, it's fully on us. So we will be, you know, looking forward there in terms of the teacher pension. Accrued liability, accrued liability based upon the number of people in the system and what we had perceived costs when they did the actuarial study in 2013. If it were to end then, we would have had to have $136 million in the system to take care of the retirees that we have now. Or we had in '13. For '14, based upon the retirees we have in the system for '14, you'd have to have $146 million in the fund. That will continue to grow as we have more retirees going in the system. And the unfunded liability is simply the amount of money that we owe versus the amount of money that we've paid in minus the administrative overhead costs for being part of MAE. And just a note down here and a note further on, that because we now know the true cost of our retiree healthcare based upon the new system that we have where we pay the bills actually on a weekly basis and they're broken out between retirees and active employees, that number went down dramatically for FY13, and it should go down dramatically for FY14. So the $15,000 that we're going to put into the budget for FY15 for the next actuarial study will take into account the new numbers, and our liability should go down. Now, how much it's going to go down will depend upon Bolton and what the actuarial study looks like, but it should go down. And so just to give you an idea in terms of the annual required contribution, normal cost, $5.4 million. You know, we're putting $5 million in, so that $433,14, that's $661,000, isn't being covered. That becomes a liability. It has interest on it. And so you can see that if we were to pay the full thing, plus the amortized unfunded liability for FY13 would have been 11.6, up 11.7, and for '14, 12.3. So this is, this is kind of how it builds. You're much farther ahead than other counties. Some counties haven't even started, so they are simply building on the amount that they Projections for FY14, we need 12.3. You've got budget of 4.9, now with the extra $90,000, it'd be $5 million. So again, there's a net shortfall of 7.4, actually about $7.3 million that goes into the unfunded liability. So we kind of keep getting a little bit farther behind, but I'm hoping that when we have the new actuarial study, that that number's going to go down. Right now, based upon the outside audit that you just did, that we're behind by $31 million. But that's based on the old actuarial study, and that will be readjusted in FY2015 based upon that new study. So right now, it's kind of still up in the air a little bit. We'll know more this time next year when the other actuarial, actuarial study is done, when we're back this time next year to give you the other OPEB update again. We hopefully will have new numbers for you. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
But in summary, we've made a disappointing, when others have been kicking it, the can down the road during the economic cycles of ups and downs, we have, the board members have addressed this at some point throughout all those years.
Yes.
So as much as your $31 million is saying that we're behind, we're well aware of that. We've also made some great increases. And if you look at the reports that, you know, you and I look at every month in comparison to other school systems larger than us, we're in a good place, generally speaking.
Actually, Prince George's County just started putting some money in.
Yeah.
They were only at $2 million, and they're starting to put some money in. So I guess somebody may have talked to them.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Allen?
So the $90,900 that you quoted from fixed charges
Yes.
came from our audited fiscal year that ended June 30th.
Yes, ma'am.
So we, we know that's a defined amount.
Right.
And I guess lastly, I would say, well, two things. Number one, I'm pleased that the trust has decided to, to look at another, not firm, but a change to the portfolio
Right.
to, to better reflect the current economic situation. One would have hoped we'd have been up a bit more than we are in what we have in that. But your, your $31 million that's, of ours that is currently unfunded, we always talk about as compared to what.
Right.
And so it would be, it would be interesting to
Sure.
find out from some of our colleagues across the state what their unfunded liability is to help us put this better into perspective. We know for the 10 of us who are part of the trust, we know how much each of us has in there, and you can sort of do a back-of-the-envelope calculation to determine, based on the number of employees they have, what that looks like.
And that's an important part, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's an important part to advance this conversation forward. The more employees you have, the greater the liability in terms of the amount.
Correct. And, and then each of us, I mean, there are some school systems, some local boards that impose what they're going to, what their retirees will get in terms of health insurance now and in the future, and then as, as compared with us who negotiate that.
Right.
So, you know, I know there are some differences there, but nonetheless, it can be a significant
And some counties handle it differently, where the county is actually picking up the, just like the county picks it up for the library and the sheriff and everybody else, other jurisdictions, actually the county is picking up the OPEB payment on behalf of the school system. So there's a mixed bag out there in terms of what different counties are doing.
Well, it's a great question, Mrs. Allen calls for me, and it's a mystery to me what the other school districts are, but there's, this is not just for the, for the school system.
Correct.
The other government, this includes the community college.
Oh, yeah.
The other facets of government. I don't, I don't know that information, how we compare to them as far as what their unfunded amount is, you know, with it. But the, I guess the positive, and I don't want to say the good news because we still have a liability on it, is that we have been whittling away at it, you know, and at least making contributions through the year. And you brought to our attention, my concern is, and it's been raised by several of our elected officials, is that are we going to be punished down the road for being judicious and contributing on the front end when this comes home to roost? And that's another good question to call, too. You know, what's going to happen if a larger district, I mean, I can't speak for the other school districts specifically, you know, they may have their own internal mechanisms for managing it. If you get to the point where this comes due and they haven't made that contribution, what's the penalty associated with that? Who's going to add that contribution? Because it's going to be a much larger financial obligation if you wait.
Oh, yeah.
Because for us, if we don't contribute to the ARC, the Annual Retirement Contribution, it compounds year after. So every year that you don't add to it, it's that plus more.
It's like a student loan.
Yeah, well, it is. And that's, you have to draw those analogies to make sense of it for people who don't understand. I'm viewing it as a pension system, a trust fund to provide that support necessary. But that is a concern, you know, individuals who aren't doing it, and we are, if then there's a level of forgiveness down the road, or whatever that may be, during these times of economic challenges we've had, you've seen a lot of things happen. And that's a good question to call. The other piece is what was raised, I think, by MAE, Steve James, who oversees some of this, is there were some innuendos made from the federal government. They were going to go back and take a look at the counties to see who was contributing, you know, to it. And if people weren't, they were going to get a little nudge or reminder. I don't know if there was going to be any form of penalty. And then I guess the third prong is that I think in terms of our own bond ratings as a county, that when our folk, our commissioners go to New York, from what I understand, that we receive some very good ratings because we've been attending to our obligation regarding this, and it's heavily viewed in the financial markets for the bond rating also. So all good news with an obligation, but my final piece, if you just may indulge me for one more minute. This is, in many ways, an unfunded mandate. This was at the expense of other things. So when we have a total, is that, is it 26 mil, what's the total we have in there? Is it?
We've contributed over 26 million.
Just under 28 million right now.
Yes, I mean, we don't have that figure up there. We have about 28 million in there. But that $28 million, if we didn't have the OPEB obligation, could have been dollars used for other things. So that's the other thing in terms of how other people are managing this, they're choosing not to participate with it right now and using those dollars to manage them during these economic times. But this has been unfunded. So I've tried to make that case at the state level. I'm going to speak tomorrow in front of the State Retirees Association in Annapolis to say that this has been done in addition to everything else, and there's not been additional monies provided from the state through the formula or whatever to contribute. We've had to balance this through all the dollars that have been given through the typical formula. And I've raised that to say, is there going to be any adjustment made in the formula to address these? Because in many ways, it's an unfunded mandate that we've had to cobble together through the contributions of the county to make this happen, but no infusion of extra dollars to do this. Same way with pension systems and healthcare, pulling all that together. But ultimately, that has a bearing in terms of the cost for instruction. Just thought I'd point that out.
Mrs. Allen, anything further?
Just that the most recent OPEB investment trust statement that we have indicates that we have 27, almost 27.6 million in there.
Slightly under 28, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Just a statement. The good news is that we have been consistently paying into the OPEB, OPEB trust fund so that we can have secure health benefit, funding for our retirees, a promise that we made. We're better off now had we not paid into it. So thank you for all you've done and this board for having a commitment to pay into the fund as much as that we can pay into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
I'm praying for a good study in 2015. New numbers.
You and me both.
Big money, big money, big money.
Big money, yes.
But, yeah, it's such a large number, and
It is.
that's, it's just wow. So I'm hoping for a good study, and we'll hopefully relook at the numbers then, and we will, we'll be in better shape.
Good.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cross?
All right. People put in for their health. We collect for their health, and they get it back when they get sick and they go to the hospital. Am I correct? We, they buy health insurance.
Get back in terms of, in terms of, yeah, making the
Right. The pensions, which were originally paid by the state
Uh-huh.
are now paid by the county. Am I correct?
Only a portion of it, okay.
All right. My, my husband wanted to know where in the world the county was getting the money for that, all right? It's quite a bit, well, but. Now, my question is, when does the OPEB start going down? When do we have to use it? That's my question.
Well, once you get through the 30 years, and then you also, you have money. You have $1.3 million in your budget to pay for retirement costs now for your current retirees that are going out.
That's not very much money.
But then we have
Am I wrong? It sounds like nothing, but
Well, no, that's just for the people that we have right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Like me.
Not for all the other, that's just, that's just to cover the retirees that are going out.
Except I get my federal insurance, but go ahead.
Right. But then, but then we, then we have the OPEB piece that's going to be kicked, especially down the road 30 years until it becomes effective. Because right now, you're double budgeting. You're budgeting operating monies and fixed charges, and you're budgeting for the OPEB payment. So you've got to get through until, what, 2038?
Okay.
Before you even start touching that money.
Okay, good.
And then that'll
So it's like in a, it's, well, it's a trust. It is called a trust.
Right. And then once you get to whatever that magic level is, then depending upon the number of retirees, if you get too many retirees, it may be that a new actuarial study at that time says, you've got to put a little bit more money in because we're not keeping up. You have the stock market, I mean, all of our money is invested. So if you have another failure in the stock market, you know, you have that investments that lowers the amount of money that are in your system, just like with the pension system when the market crashed and they lost, what, a billion dollars or something like that? This will be the same thing. So it'll have to be looked at on an annual basis. You'll have the actual aerial studies every two years from now until forever, and then just got to keep an eye on it.
Very good. Well, thank you. That was a very good explanation, Mr. Moore.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Peter?
No, no one.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Norris, please continue with the financial report.
Okay. Okay, there's not really a lot on the financial report. A couple of things to point out on revenue. I do not have an answer. I'm sure some of you, and I'm wondering, too, you can see up here on other, other refunds where we had $50,000 budgeted. We've already got $100,929 in there. I will have an answer for you next time to go back and find out what that is because I don't know. So we will figure out what's going on there. On the insurance refunds, that's two things. That's part of the vehicle that was burnt out, and that's part of Spring Ridge. And so we will be getting more money in that category, but right now we've got the $25,000. And then finally down here on Impact Aid, what's happening there is we've been notified by the, by the feds that they're going to start processing Impact Aid, but for the jurisdictions that need it. Impact Aid, but for the jurisdictions that need it, where that is 70, 80, 90 percent of their budget, they're going to do them first, and they'll come back and do jurisdictions like us. So, while we would normally get some money in the November, December timeframe, probably won't be coming in until January. So, they just wanted to give us a heads-up because of sequestration and, you know, the government shutdown and all of that. They are way behind, and so like a lot of the schools on Indian reservations and stuff like that, they need the money first because they've got large populations. So, just to know that you won't see anything there for a little bit. In terms of operating expenses, the one thing to point out here, under special education, you can see that we've gone back up here under contracted services. That is some more outsourcing for therapists and those kinds. Remember that we moved $300,000 of that money last month over to medical assistance, and we'll be, you know, kind of keeping an eye on this as we go through the year, and probably what we will be doing in January, when we bring the categorical fund transfer, we're going to have to probably put a little bit of money in there, so we'll need to do some movement around at that point in time. And then the only other one, again over here under maintenance plant, is the small negative up here in our charges. Again, that's part of Spring Ridge costs, and as we get the revenues back in from MABE, we'll offset that against that, and that'll go away, too. So, there's not really a lot happening at this point in time. I know some of you on the group health insurance right here, that you can see that we've already spent $6.5 million. We've got $10 million left, and this is November, but what that doesn't take into account is the employee contributions. So, Rob, on a quarterly basis, moves $2.5 million over, so he just put $2.5 into the account that we have where we draw money out to pay for the health insurance, okay? So, this is your contribution in terms of the school system, and then that gets billed first, and then we go back, we move some money down in terms of the expenses against the retirees, and then we have to credit the money in from the employee's contribution, too. So, we're going to keep an eye on it. I've got them doing some projections to the end of the year. We'll probably have to put a little bit of money in there, but it won't be until May, so we'll just see how that goes. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Mrs. Allen?
No questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions. Corcoran?
No, thank you.
Here?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The Spring Ridge project, we still have additional funding coming in on that, right?
Right.
Eventually?
I mean, everything's in motion.
Everything's still in motion with that.
As far as the renovation project or the fire?
Yeah. Well, that's part of it, the whole thing.
Well, the renovation is all part of capital money, not the operating.
Right, yeah.
And as Greg mentioned there, there is some revenues coming back in on the insurance program.
Okay, so then that would zero that part of it out, and then we're just waiting for the rest of it.
Yeah.
On the capital side to get going.
Yeah. Back end of the year, three occasionally updates on the board's, that's the same thing.
Yeah. The reason I just bring that up momentarily is that there's been some conversation in the community about it, as we all know, so.
It's going to be interesting.
Okay, future board meetings. The next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, November the 26th, 2013, at 5:30 PM in this room, and this meeting is adjourned.